All right, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Little Rock Planning Commission, December 12, 2024. All right, so we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order, and can I please get a roll call vote to determine a quorum, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Brown? Hart?
Here.
Hodges?
Here.
McDonald?
Here.
Person?
Here.
Samad? Baxter?
Here.
Russell?
Present.
Vickers?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, moving right along here, and we have the minutes. I'm sure all the commissioners got a chance to review the minutes. If there's not any particular questions, I would like to entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve as submitted. Second.
Have a motion in a second. Can I get a roll call vote, please? Commissioner Brown? Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Samad? Baxter?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Vickers?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
All right, perfect. We'll move to the next item agenda is our consent agenda, and we can have the reading. Monte, if you will.
Following is a consent agenda, Little Rock Planning Commission meeting of December 12, 2024. The first group of items are on for deferral or withdrawal. Item one, file number S-1963 is being deferred to the March 13, 2025 agenda due to further legal issues. The deferral will not be charged to the applicant. Item number two, Z-10,032 is being withdrawn without prejudice at the request of the applicant. Item number three, Z-9,500C is being withdrawn without prejudice at the request of the applicant. Item number five, Z-10,066 is being withdrawn at the request of the applicant. Item number eight, Z-10,074 is being deferred to the January 9, 2025 agenda at the request of the applicant. Item 14, Z-10,069 is being deferred to the January 9, 2025 agenda as the applicant failed to notify surrounding property owners as required. And item 19, Z-10,00106 is being withdrawn without prejudice at the request of the applicant. Next are the items on consent approval. Item, item four has been moved to the regular agenda for discussion. So the first item on consent approval is item number six. File number Z-10,061 Flores Office Warehouse PDO, 7524 Fairfield Drive. Staff recommends approval of the requested PDO zoning subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs E and F in the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item number nine, S-1983, the Reserve at Brody Creek, Preliminary Platte, south side of West 36th Street, approximately one quarter mile east of South Shackelford Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested Preliminary Platte subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D and E in the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item number 10, G-23492, South Battery Street Right-of-Way Abandonment, between West Markham Street and West Second Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested street right-of-way abandonment subject to a utility easement being retained as requested by the utility companies noted in paragraph E of the Agenda Staff Report. Item number 11, G-23493 Alley Right-of-Way Abandonment, Block 9, Hollenberg Edition. Staff recommends approval of the requested alley right-of-way abandonment subject to the dedication of a 10-foot sewer easement as requested by Little Rock Wastewater noted in paragraph E of the Agenda Staff Report. Item 12, G-23494 Alley and Unnamed Street Right-of-Way Abandonment. Alley, the alley within Block 8, Josephine Pankey, 3rd Edition, and the street, the unnamed street, south of Block 8, Josephine Pankey, 3rd Edition. Staff recommends approval of the requested alley right-of-way abandonment and unnamed street abandonment subject to a utility easement being retained as requested by the utility companies noted in paragraphs D and E of the Agenda Staff Report. Item 13, Z-10,054 Patterson Accessory Dwelling Conditional Use Permit, 2510 South Chester Street. Staff recommends approval of the CUP request subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraph E in the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item 15 is being moved to the regular agenda for discussion. Item 17, Z-10,001 rezoning from R2 to C3 immediately east of 8123 Stagecoach Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested C3 rezoning. Item 18, Z-10,00103 Coleman PDC, 2522 South Art Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested PDC rezoning subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F in the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item 20, Z-10,100 Phillips STR1 Special Use Permit, 1600A North Grant Street. Staff recommends approval of this SUP request subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. And item 22, Z-10,00102 Liberton STRs, PDC, 2005, 2005A, West 17th Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested PDC zoning for both 2,500 West 17th Street and 2,500A West 17th Street subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. That concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you very much, Monte. We've heard the reading of the consent agenda. If we don't have any comments or questions by any commissioners, I would love to entertain a motion for the approval of the consent agenda. Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
There was an email that we received in opposition for Z-10100. Was there not a card for that one?
No. No cards.
Okay.
All right, Commissioner Russell, did you?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read with all staff's recommendations and conditions.
All right, we have a motion in a second. May I give a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Brown? Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Samad?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Vickers?
Yes. The consent agenda has been approved.
Thank you. If your item number was on the consent agenda, you're more than welcome to stay, but at this time, you can leave. At this particular time, there were two items that came off. Item number four, Z-10060, the FRT Group Home. And item number 15, Z-10105AFMC, the Event Center. So if, if your item number four or 15, you would definitely need to stay, has been moved to the regular agenda at this particular time. So we will give one moment for everybody to depart this meeting. And for the regular agenda, the items would go as follow. The normal ones were a seven, 1621, and we're going to add in numerical order, number four and number 15. So at this particular time, we're gonna move right along to our regular agenda, but before we do that, Monte.
At this point, it's the commission's policy to offer deferrals to the applicants on regular agenda when the number of commissioners present drops to eight or below. And just for the applicants present, you have to have six votes to have an application approved.
Exactly. Yes. So just to reiterate what Monte is saying, because we have one commissioner that's out today, and we have two unfielded seats that you would pretty much have to get a unanimous vote to get your, well, six out of eight, I should say.
Thank you, Commissioner Russell.
Six out of eight for your item to pass. So with that being said, if you would like to defer, you can defer to the next meeting, which is next month on January, without prejudice. So that's an option to you. You do not have to. That is an option on the table due to the fact of the number of commissioners that we have. So I'm gonna say that for every item on the item. So it's your choice. Once we call you up and you come to the podium, you will have that option. Okay?
And that's at the city's expense, correct?
No.
No? Okay, so it's at the option of the, okay.
It counts as one of the applicant's deferrals.
All right, so Brad, did you have anything before we move to the regular agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I was just gonna say that I believe that, that the board has gone into executive session and has, we may have some new commissioners next month. So I just want everyone to know that we won't be working with eight for too much, too much longer.
Thank you. All right, let's move right along here to item number seven, Z-1110059, the King STR2. Is the applicant present at this particular time?
Item four.
Item number seven, Z-10059. And I don't know, I just wanna make sure that the applicant didn't go outside or take a phone call.
Is item four removed?
No, item number seven. On the regular agenda.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, no, you're fine. If the applicant is not present at this particular time, then we will have to move right along to, well, we have to, yeah.
You'll need to vote to defer to January.
Okay, so we'll do each one versus just doing them all if another applicant is not present. So at this particular time, the applicant is not present for the King STR2, and it's time I'd like to entertain a motion for deferral for the next item or at, at the applicant's expense, as well as if they don't make the next meeting, then, you know, they will have to come back to the planning commission.
Has there already been, there's already been one deferral? So this would be the second. Okay. I'll make a motion to defer item Z-10059, King STR2 PDC, 5147 Cantrell Road, until the January Planning Commission hearing.
Second.
We have a motion in a second that's on the table. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Brown? Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Samad?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Vickers?
Yes.
Motion is approved to defer the item to the January 9 meeting.
All right, thank you. And moving right along to our next item is item number 16, Z-10064. Is the applicant present? For this, all right, and while, while you're making your way to the podium here, I have Monte to do the reading here for the item.
Item 16, file number Z-10,064. This is a rezoning from R2 to R4 for 45 lots along Mountain Vista Drive and Summit View Drive. The applicant proposes to rezone 45 lots of the 57 lots in the Vista Point subdivision from R2 Single Family District to R4 Two Family District. The Vista Point subdivision is platted with 57 lots, and 12 of the lots are currently either developed and owned by someone else, or vacant and owned by someone other than the subdivider of the, of the overall property. The remaining lots are undeveloped. Mountain Vista Drive is the only access to the subdivision and is connected to Skyline Drive in Saline County. The applicant's intent is to construct two-story townhouse-style duplexes on the 45 undeveloped lots. The proposed 1,464 square foot townhouses are designed to match the character of existing homes. Each townhouse is designed with a one-car garage and independent driveway access. Staff is not supportive of the requested rezoning from R2 to R4. Staff does not feel inappropriate to double the intensity of the subdivision. Doubling the intensity does not fit with the land use plan and would put stress on the existing infrastructure. Additionally, having only one entrance to the subdivision poses safety concerns due to the difficulty of emergency response vehicle access. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the requested rezoning from R2 to R4.
Thank you, Monte. All right, applicant, please state your name for the record.
My name is Kendall Perkins. I'm counsel and representative for the applicant. Construction LLC. Oh, there it goes. And, you know, while we don't agree with the request for denial, I did speak with Mr. Moore. He called me yesterday afternoon, and I spoke with my client about the fact that there were only eight commissioners, and so we did want to elect our deferral until the January 9 hearing date, at which time hopefully we'll have more than eight, and we can present the reason why it should be approved at that time.
Okay, sounds good. All right, so item number 16, Z-10064. Had requested a deferral, so I would love to entertain a motion for this item.
I'll make a motion to accept the request for deferral of item Z-10064 until the January Planning Commission hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Brown? Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Samad?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Vickers?
Yes.
Uh, I don't think I missed anybody, did I? Okay, sorry. Item 16 has been deferred to the January 9 agenda.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll see all of you next month.
Thank you. Move right along to item number 21, Z-6723-A. Painted Acres. Is the applicant present? All right. Yes, item 21. While you're coming to the podium, Monte, if you will, do the reading.
Item 21, file number Z-6723-A. Painted Acres LLC STR2 PDC located at Number 1 Amherst Cove. The applicant proposes to rezone this 0.14 acre property located at Number 1 Amherst Cove from R2 to PDC to allow for use of the property as a short-term rental, too, with a maximum stay of 29 days. The owner will not reside in the residence, and the entire structure will be rented as one unit. The property is occupied by a 1,440 square foot, four-bedroom, two-bath house. The drive, there is a driveway that is accessible from North Hughes Street that is capable of accommodating three to four vehicles. There have been no Department of Planning and Development enforcement cases or any police reports for this property. This property has been in operation as a short-term rental since January 27 of 2023. Staff knows of no other approved STRs located within a quarter mile of this site. Staff does not support the requested rezoning from R2 to PDC. Staff does not believe the request is reasonable. The proposed PDC use is not appropriate for this location. Staff has received numerous objections from the surrounding neighbors with concerns, and therefore, staff recommends denial of the PDC zoning request.
Thank you. All right, applicant, please state your name for the record.
Sammy Moore.
Yes.
Sammy Moore.
All right, welcome, Ms. Moore here. Now, if you would like to move forward with your item, you can, or if you like to defer until next month, you may.
I think that I will opt to defer because of the number of members.
No, it's not a problem at all. And we appreciate you definitely coming out, and if you're deferring, so your deferral will be next month.
Okay.
Of course, it would be the second Thursday.
All right.
And so we will have, so Ms. Moore on item Z-6723-A as opt to defer until next month's meeting. So if I can entertain a motion on this item?
Make a motion to accept the deferral of item Z-6723-A until the January Planning Commission hearing.
Second.
Are we have a motion in a second on the table? Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Brown? Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Samad?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Vickers?
Yes.
Motion, the application's been deferred to the January 9 meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. All right, moving right along to item number four. And item number four is Z-10060, the FRT Group Home. If the applicant is present, please make your way to the podium. All right, and while you're making your way and setting up, I will have Monte to provide the reading.
Item number four, file number Z-10,060. FRT Group Home Special Use Permit located at 40 Lakeside Drive. The applicant is requesting a special use permit to allow for a group home facility to be operated in the existing single-family residence, which is zoned R2. The proposed group home will have a maximum of eight disabled residents at any given time. The site contains a 2,047 square foot, two-story, four-bedroom, two-bath, single-family residence. Section 8406A of the city's Building and Building Regulations Ordinance regulates the minimum area per dwelling. Requires 150 square feet for each occupant and 100, for the first occupant, and 100 square feet for each additional. This residence does qualify or meet that regulation for eight persons. Also, section 8406B is the minimum area per bedroom, and the applicant has provided the areas for all the bedrooms, and that also does comply with section 8406B. To staff's knowledge, there are no other similar living facilities within a 1,500-foot radius of this property. The residences will not drive or own a vehicle. All services will be provided off-premise at another facility to the residents. Staff recommends approval of the special use permit request subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report.
Thank you, Monte. Applicant, please state your name for the record.
My name is Morgan Applegate, and I'm representative for FRT.
All right, sounds good. Okay, would you like to move forward with your, with your item today or deferral?
We would like to move forward.
Okay, sounds good. You do have several cards in opposition. Would you like to go ahead and make your statements now, or would you like to defer your time and come back after opposition has spoke?
I would like to go ahead and defer my time and let them talk first, and then come back.
Sounds good. All right, so we're gonna have, we have several cards here. Now, both sides have, for in favor and opposition, you have up to 20 minutes. So each side have 20 minutes. So if you have 10 cars, then essentially, you know, everybody gets two minutes each, or if you have a collective or one speaker, they can presume to get all time. I'm sorry, before we actually present, Sean, did you have a statement?
Since it's a group home, as Monte described, it meets all the density requirements. There's no parking issues. It meets the eight-person's presumption. So at this point, we're going to declare that it automatically has to be approved. And certainly, you can express your First Amendment rights, but please, when you come to the podium, do not refer to disability, and also understand that the Planning Commission has no legal authority or discretion to deny.
Thank you, Sean. The first card on the opposition is Charlotte James. If you're present, please make your way to the podium.
Yes, I'm Charlotte James, and I live at 53 Lakeside Drive. We have some concerns. Because first of all, one of the concerns was listed that it did not meet with the community or the people that live in the subdivision of Lakeside Drive. That was, that has not happened until this day. And the other concern was that safety for our neighborhood and the value of our property, what we list due to our property. Those were some of the other concerns. And we also have a petition that was signed. Some of the neighbors signed a petition. So I have that petition. If you've not already seen it, I do have it with me. And another concern was about some of the residents. Sometimes we see them walking, and sometimes we've had people knock on other people's doors at night. We've never had that issue before, like 3 o'clock in the morning. And talking, they were, they could not, they were speaking, but it was not coherent. And another thing to concern, we have more traffic, and sometimes I see. And another thing to concern, we have more traffic, and sometimes I see, I see a white van, and I'm not the only one, and sometimes there are more than eight people that go in that house. People have seen that. And where I live, I can see directly up forty, and sometimes people go eat, walk, they go through the side of the house, between the two houses, and then sometimes they'll stay, but sometimes they'll come back. Out of, one person comes back and walks out all the way down. I don't know where she goes. I think down to probably Western Hills, I, you know, I'm not sure about that. But that's happened more than one time, and that's the, those are some of the concerns that we have about our neighborhood. And I feel like they're legit, and they also feel like they are, but, you know, I'm just trying to state the facts. And so what I'd like to say, it's been going on for, they have been there six months plus, but we were not notified. We got some letters, some people got letters, some people didn't, just like some people didn't get this meeting, this letter about this meeting, but I did. And so the communications is a little, it's awful a little bit there. And all we want to do is have, we want to just come to a peaceful agreement about if you're gonna move in a community that's not used to people walking around and extra traffic, and we have a school and a church, and we have children that get off the bus. We need to, we're concerned about that, and are the people in the house getting their services that they need? You know, that's a concern. They're supposed to be monitored or whatever, but when you see them walking down the street, they're not with anyone else, I don't think. And those are concerns, that's all, that I think they're pretty legit. Do I need to turn in this petition to anyone?
If you want to make it anything just for the record, you can definitely give it, you can give it to us, and we add it to the, to the file.
And there are concerns that I am stating, some of them, I probably missed some, but there's.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. James.
You're welcome.
All right, our next card is Martin, is it Sanati?
I defer.
You defer your time, okay. And the next card is, is it Karen Proetz?
My name is Karen Proetz. My family and I own properties at thirty, thirty-one, thirty-three, thirty-five, and sixty-three Lakeside Drive. We've invested in this neighborhood as a single-family residential neighborhood since about nineteen eighty-five. We had no idea that this sort of proposal was happening, and then we've learned that apparently they set up the operation as a group home before applying for a special use permit. I'm not sure what constitutes a handicap, according to the application, but it's my understanding from the research I've done that it's actually a group home for persons who are battling alcohol and drug addiction problems.
We can't address that. It's all covered under the American Disabilities Act, whether it's a handicap disability or whether they're seeking drug and alcohol treatment, we cannot consider it, and please do not discuss someone else's disability.
Okay, okay, all right. I'm glad you clarified that, because I wouldn't have known that. Okay, so anyway, my family members and I are very concerned about this. We invested in the neighborhood heavily, as, as I just enumerated, the homes that we own, and we had no idea that a group home like this could be allowed. We also are concerned, it being a single-family residential neighborhood, we are concerned about the transient nature of the persons who would live at this residence, and that that would diminish the comfort and quiet of the single-family residential neighborhood that has existed for many years.
Thank you very much. All right.
Can I ask a question still?
Yes, you still have time. Please come up to the podium, please.
I just want to clarify something. So to understand you, and I'm not getting into disabilities.
State your name for the record, please.
Marty Sanati, not getting into disabilities, but if I have a home, a structure that qualifies and meets all the requirements from a physical standpoint, that has the maximum square footage for this and that, I could put it right next to your house or your house? Is that what we're saying? And, and the city has no argument for that?
Based upon federal law, the Fair Housing Act, the American Disabilities Act, the United States Constitution, the Arkansas Constitution, and case law, the United States Supreme Court has ruled, and, and our ordinances reflect that, and our code reflects that there is an automatic presumption, because eight unrelated people can live in any house, right? If you wanted to move eight family members into your home right now, the city could not do a thing about it. And it's, that same rule applies to people with disabilities.
They're not family members. They're not family members, period.
That's what I'm saying, though. If, if eight unrelated people can live in a house, and they can in this city, then that same rule would apply to someone with a disability. And if we, but now, I will say this, because we get these, this is a conversation and something that the city is dealing with in regards to group homes, because the state has turned it over to the cities to control. And one of the things that I constantly hear is people may be possibly trespassing on people's property, or there may be noise complaints. The city cannot deny a group home, but that doesn't mean people can just roam freely in your neighborhood, trespass on your property, knock on your door at night. So just like anyone else, if they came onto your property at night, you call the police, because no one is protected under the ADA from criminal liability. And I know that doesn't provide you much comfort, but just because you have a disability does not make you criminally immune from a trespass or a noise complaint. And if the company is not running the, the group home properly, reach out to the city, and we contact these management companies and tell them, you know, you gotta clean up your operations, because it's affecting the neighborhood. But what the city cannot do is deny people with disabilities from living in homes and seeking treatment, because if we do, we'll get a class action lawsuit against us, and we will lose, and the city will be accused of violating the American Disabilities Act and the Fair Housing Act, and we're not going to allow that.
All right, thank you, Sean. And with that being said, if there, you have further concerns or ongoing concerns, please don't hesitate, like, like I said, too, you can make a, you know, you know, a formal representation or a letter to the city to make that address, or just like Attorney Overton just stated, if there is something that's going on and is a criminal or allegedly a criminal activity, you know.
And I'm gonna give you my card so that you can reach out to me. If you have problems, I will reach out to the man, the management company myself on behalf of y'all and let them know.
Excuse me, excuse me, sir. If you make any statements, please come to the mic so we can have everything on record. If they continually violate or, or if they're, excuse me, let me rephrase that. If there are multiple violations on a recurring basis, is there a possibility of this being revoked, or is that, that can't happen because they're under the ADA and all that?
Because of the ADA, they could not be revoked.
That's great, great answer. All right.
Okay, I understand your point.
All right, is that, is that clear to you, sir? You have an understanding?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so what we're gonna do, we're gonna have the applicant come back up, please.
Okay, to answer some of the questions, if I may, there's a lot of these houses that are being ran without a permit or a license all across the city, and we are, we are one of the few places that are actually trying to do it the right way. The code office brought to our attention that needed to be done, so we decided to do it. The ladies in this house aren't even home during the day. They're at a treatment facility from eight o'clock to three o'clock every single day. We don't have a white van, we have a black van. The fact of the matter is, is that addiction is running.
Sir, just like I do not discuss disability.
The fact of the matter is that there are people in the city of Little Rock that are walking around that need services. We provide services at our treatment center inside the house. There is someone there that monitors them. There's a lot of oversight. There's probably been people walking around the neighborhood in your yard, and it's just brought to your attention now that something's going on in your neighborhood. There was a community meeting at the Southwest Community Center, and it was approved through that committee over there. Everybody voted in favor of it, because we need these types of houses for people that function like a family. They do function like a family. So I know it's concerning, but I'm a product of one of these houses. And if it wasn't for a place like this, I probably would be dead today. Today, I own my own home, I have my own vehicle, I work for this facility, and I'm making a positive change in the community. And everybody in this home has the same opportunity to do those things, because they have a place to live. It starts with a place to live. If you have no place to live, you can't change your life if you're living on the streets. So thanks to a place like this, I'm where I'm at today. I live in Southwest, and someone asked me, they said, well, would you want one of these homes in your community? I said, absolutely, so that I know where these people are, so I know that they're getting help, so I know that they're not walking down the street or standing at the gas station or walking, standing out in my yard at night. They're somewhere where they're supervised, and they're safe. These are mothers, these are daughters, these are family members. That's the fact of it. That's what it is. I know you're concerned, but maybe your concern should move further out of that area.
Is it all, sir?
I have my clinical director here, Tiara Miller. She could talk a little bit about our program and what they do when they're not at the house.
All right, thank you. Yes, madam, please state your name for the record.
Tiara Miller.
All right, Ms. Miller, go ahead, the floor is yours.
So like Morgan said, no one receives treatment in the house, they receive it at our clinic. It's an intensive outpatient where we provide individual therapy. Can I speak to the services?
You're, you're, you're crossing the line that, that, that is really not, that their treatment is not a concern for the planning commission, and I really am not comfortable with it.
Okay, but I would just simply say that they are monitored within the home, and services are not being provided in the home, if that's good.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. All right, I'm gonna open the floor up, I'm gonna open the floor up to any of the commissioners for any questions for the applicant or opposition at this particular time.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Could I ask the applicant, is there a person living in the house at all times supervising these residents?
Yes, there is.
Okay, thank you.
No, no, ma'am, we, we not, we.
Stand here, can I stand here?
No, ma'am, I will, I will get you, I got the floor open to the commissioners now. So after that, I will let you have a word, all right? Thank you. Any other statements from any other commissioners?
So a question for, for our attorney, and I know we've, we've spoken about this at training. Okay, so Fair Housing Act, it does not preempt land use or zoning statutes, but the only way for the city of Little Rock.
Excuse me, Commissioner Baxter, can we get you speaking to the mic, please?
Absolutely, my apologies, thank you. The only way for the city to prevent group homes from going in communities, it would have to make an ordinance not based on disability, something along the lines of no more than eight people, regardless of ability or disability, are able to live in this property. Is that correct?
I don't think that. I don't think that that would actually resolve it. I think that the eight number that we come up with isn't based upon what we consider to be the number of people that can live in a particular dwelling. That's, that's decided by density, square footage. The eight number comes from the United States Supreme Court, and our, our codes and ordinances, and, and Monty, you may know this, how many unrelated people can live in a particular home outside of density requirements? We don't have a, a number, a limited number, do we?
I believe the ordinance allows four.
Four?
The definition of family would be an unlimited number of people who are related by blood, marriage, or adoption, and that's, I say unlimited, but it, but it is as per the square footage of the house.
And that's for related.
Or, or unrelated people up to four.
Okay. And then the eight, that's why I was saying, the eight number doesn't come necessarily from our ordinances, it comes from the United States Supreme Court decisions.
Applicant, remind me of your name.
Morgan Applegate.
Mr. Applegate, and chief of nursing, what was your name?
Tiara Miller.
Ms. Miller, clinical director, thank you. I mean, I, I'm just gonna make a comment for the record, I'm gonna keep this very brief, because this isn't the first time this issue has come up. Thank you so much for what you do. I've been involved in this space before, and I one hundred percent agree, this is absolutely necessary for our communities, and it's not easy work. Neighbors, I one hundred percent hear you all as well, and as our attorney mentioned, this is something that's out of our hands. So I fully hear your concerns, we hear your concerns, but it is what it is, and, and hopefully down the road, we can, we can work on this as a city.
All right, I'm gonna let, allow, Ms. James, you want to come up, and I'm just gonna give you briefly two minutes, up to two minutes to make a statement or a question for you.
Okay, I have a question, well, I have a statement. We have, I have a statement, because we did not meet the people, our neighborhood association is called Westwood, Western Hills, not Southwest City, so we did not meet with him there. So I want to, you know, make that clear, so I don't know what meeting, we never did establish a meeting at the home. The first one I attended, and I was the only person, and my daughter was on the phone with me. The second one, he sent out a notice, that never happened, it still hasn't happened until this day, so we've never met with him, that's all I want to say.
Thank you, Ms. James. And I will urge, and I will say this, you know, today is a, I, I know that you all didn't meet or formally did not meet at the association meeting, but even today after this meeting, it probably would be good to meet, maybe even exchange contact information, talk about it, because, you know, the, the fact remains, you know, everybody's in this neighborhood and this community, and you need to know who, you know, who's who, and, and I would definitely urge, you know, to keep the lines of communication open, definitely going forward. Sean, did you have a statement?
Yes, based upon your comment, I want to make sure that all the noticing requirements were met for the record. So Monty, y'all have, y'all have, our, Torrance, has, has everything been met?
Yes, sir, the, the applicant notified as required. So I mean, I'm looking at the, at the notice.
Yeah, let's state this for the record.
Looking at the ownership search and certified, certified marriage receipts. Ms. James, is your name, is it in the entity, or, or is it in your name?
Charlotte James, Roy James. It's probably slash, the second letter I got from you, that's how it was listed. The other two that I got from him, one didn't have a return on it, but they did have a name on it. Some of the neighbors didn't get it. I talked to Morgan before, you know, I said, all we want to do is have an understanding. So I did receive two, but not, every but one in the neighborhood did not get a letter about meeting, and the meeting was at twelve o'clock first.
Excuse me, Ms. James, we cannot hear you. If you have a statement, please come to the mic. Thank you.
We did not formally meet at the house, the rest of the neighbors. I was the only person there, and I had my, next to my oldest daughter, she was on the phone, and I asked some of those questions about property and whatever, but the meeting was at twelve o'clock in the day. The next meeting, I'm trying to get the time, it was like four something, but everyone in the neighborhood didn't get a letter, because we researched and, you know, had some people out finding out. So we had a neighborhood meeting, and there were some people that came about the homeless and some, and other things that were perhaps, perhaps related to what's going on, but we've never had a meeting with him personally in our neighborhood that I'm aware of, else I didn't get the note.
All right, thank you. Okay, so.
Per the ownership search, I mean, everybody that is on the ownership search and the certified marriage receipts are, are present. If you're not, the applicants are required to send notices two hundred feet from the boundaries of the property. The city sends out a supplemental notice for another one hundred feet for a total of a three hundred foot coverage from the boundary of the property. So if you're not within three hundred feet of the boundary of the property, you will receive a notice.
Thank you very much, Torrance, for, for that information. Does any other commissioner have any other questions or statements on this particular item? If not, I would love to entertain a motion.
Before I make a motion, I'll just make a statement that I'm so very fortunate that before I bought my house, nobody thought it prudent to interview me before I purchased that property. I'll make a motion to approve item Z dash one zero zero six zero with all staff's recommendations and conditions in the agenda staff report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the table. May I get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Brown, Hart.
Yes.
Hodges.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Person.
Yes.
Samad.
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Vickers?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
Thank you very much, applicant, for coming out and thank you everybody for coming out on this action item. All right, we're gonna move right along to our last, uh, action item on the, um, agenda for today, that's item number 15, Z dash 10105 AFMC Event Center. Is the applicant present today? All right, while you're making your way, uh, to the podium, Monty, if you can provide the reading, please.
Item 15, file number Z 10,001,05 AFMC Event Center, conditional use permit, 1023 West Third Street. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow an event center at this property, 1023 West Third Street. The property is on UU, the request is in the downtown planning district. The structure is a 3,600 square foot, one-story brick building which has been used as a conference training facility for the employees of AFMC, which is the Arkansas Foundation for Medical Care. And, uh, that entity, uh, occupies this entire block bounded by, uh, West Third, West Fourth, Chester and Ringo Street, and they also have the parking lot within the quarter block to the west across Ringo. The applicant proposes to rent the, this smaller building to other groups for conferences, employee training, and other corporate uses. The hours will be from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM and there will not be any ticketed events held at this location. Staff feels there is ample parking, as the maximum number of attendees will be limited to 99 people. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow an 80 square foot, seven foot tall, internal, internally illuminated monument type sign at the corner of Chester Street and West Third Street, which is the northeast corner of the overall property. Uh, staff does support that variance. Staff is in support of the requested CUP. Staff believes the request is reasonable and the proposed CUP is appropriate, is an appropriate use for this location. Staff feels this type of use is within charac- the character of the area at this time and staff recommends approval of the CUP zoning, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in the staff analysis of the agenda staff report.
Thank you. Applicant, please state your name, uh, for the record.
Tim Yelvington, I'm with RPPY Architects, I'm representing AFMC today.
Okay, uh, great. Uh, would you all like to move forward with this item on the agenda today or would you like to, uh, defer until next month?
We would like to move forward.
All right, thank you. Also, you have one card, uh, that's in opposition. Would you like to defer your time and then come back up afterwards or would you like to present or make your statement now?
I think I'd defer after I know what the complaint is.
All right, so, thank you, all right. So we have one card and that's, uh, EB Scott. Uh, if you're present, please, uh, make your way to the podium, thank you. And please, uh, state your name for the record. And you can move that down, yeah, there you go.
He was a lot taller than I. Uh, thank you for your efforts for the city. My name is Becky Scott and I, I have an office at 1100 West Capitol at Ringo. That is a block from this location that, um, you're considering for an event center. I really understand the desire to want to increase income and, uh, with all the commercial and government moving their offices west, we have numerous empty buildings and some boarded up directly across the street from us. The ATNT Building, for instance, has been empty for quite some time, as you know. Um, we've been at this location for almost 50 years. We have continued to watch the decline of this area. Um, you would think it would be appreciating in a city like Little Rock, it is anything but that. Um, there are buildings for sale that aren't selling. Uh, the government offices, as I said, have moved out. I would think it would be something that the city, the state would encourage that your business section be around the Capitol. They continuously in the press and the media, uh, talk about how bad Capitol Avenue looks and its parking lots. Well, parking lots are better than a boarded up building that is left to be broken into by people who need to house themselves for the evening. Um, there's no demand for parking in the area because there are fewer and fewer businesses. Uh, you can't get income because no parking demand, very little to be honest. Food trucks are very difficult to get. I have tried on our third and, well, let me just say, since you have a map up, um, where there, this, uh, entity is located with the pinned red mark, we are due south of that one block. And we have parking lots around that building at 1100 West Capitol. We also have two other parking lots on Chester and Third. Um, if it weren't for that one, that the federal building rents a very few number of spaces, I mean, we can't get any income. The, we tried with food trucks, I've been through many, many rude discussions from the city people who are saying you can't have food trucks.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, but is there an objection to this application that you have to lodge?
There is. That's what I'm doing.
Okay.
Am I not saying what you want me to say or something or what are you saying?
We haven't heard an objection to the application yet.
Okay, I'm getting there. Sorry. I mean, it's not very long, I promise. Um, I can't get income there. I know why they want income from this event center, is that point? Does that make more sense to what I was saying?
No.
Okay. Um, if you have an event center, which there are event centers now that have been allowed on Seventh, on Eighth, on Ninth, they have undesirables all through the night. We already have undesirables breaking into our buildings and leaving trash. Um, the, uh, we just had break-in three months ago, there's a police report on that. If possibly this was an event center truly for their employees and was closed at, uh, five or six, that would be understandable. 10 o'clock, we've got plenty of problems after five, all around the area. Um, behind the Republican Party office, there is trash and vagrants and whatnot and nobody does anything about that. We at least clean up around our building. Um, I think an event center at Chester and Third in your prime part of the city, uh, the Third is a major thoroughfare and I think that, uh, everybody's moving out west because of just such as this. And you can drive up and down Seventh, you can drive up and down Eighth and Ninth, and event centers are not a good product to fix the area. They keep talking about wanting to improve Capitol Avenue. Realtors talk about it, the city talks about it, the media talks about it. And then they bring in a food truck festival, which broke into the building, knocked down our wall, left trash in the area. I worked with them a lot, they said that no one lived in that building and no one owned that property, they were told by the chaper. I said, did they check the tax rules? I got a letter from you all because of the tax rules. So yes, I'm violently opposed to another event center in the area and if they wanna have a corporate business area and they, and call that a meeting room for their employees or bringing in for conferences until 5:00, absolutely fine. Not as an event center until 10:00 in the evening. Do you have any other questions, by the way?
I don't have any questions now.
Does anybody else have any questions?
No, we'll get to that, uh, Ms. Scott. Are, are you, have you completed your statement?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna bring the applicant back up here, uh, to the podium. And feel free to address any of the, uh, concerns or-
Tim Yelvington again.
And the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that and, and I do appreciate your concerns, uh, with the area. My office is at 713 West Second, not very far from here, so I understand your concerns. But I would, I did call my client one earlier today after I heard that there was a card and we understand event centers are not very well-liked in the, in the city. And I made sure that they will have police officer onsite or security officer onsite as long as there's somebody in that building. And they will not allow anything, any activity outside the building. The building will be, the activities within that building has to remain in that building. Of course, they do have to go to the parking lot, but the officers in charge of that whole site, their building is right next door, four-story. So of course, they don't want that either. So I would just say, I think their intention is truly to have more income. Uh, I will say that, you know, for that building, they used it as a call center, COVID hit and then they all went home, they don't wanna come back, you know, like normal. So they made it into a conference training room for their employees. And then they had people come to them and say, we would like to rent that. I'm not saying it's only for that, but that's what stimulated our conversation to make this, uh, an, an event center.
Okay.
That's the conclusion of my rebuttal.
That's fair. Uh, at this particular time, I wanna open the floor up to any of the commissioners that have any questions, uh, for you or any, any opposition or any statements at this particular time. So the floor is open, commissioners, for any-
I have a question for staff. Um, so it's my understanding that UU zone is, for lack of a better phrase, a free-for-all. It's essentially everything under the stun except for perhaps industrial uses?
Yes, uh, Commissioner Russell, uh, all commercial uses are allowed in UU.
So why is this a conditional use permit?
You wanna?
Uh, an event center is not a permitted commercial use in any of the commercial zones. It first shows up as a conditional use and the ordinance says in the UU, any conditional uses or I believe I-2 uses have to go through the CUP process.
Gotcha, okay. So event centers and industrial uses specifically are excluded, or not excluded, but not allowed by rights within the UU.
You, you can do all the permitted uses in the residential office and commercial straight zoning categories.
Okay, so the hall, I'm assuming was a conditional use?
Uh, the hall, I believe they opted to do a plan development on that one. But it, but it didn't come through the commission and, and all.
Okay, is, is, was Vino's a conditional use or is that operating as a bar?
Yeah, yeah, that, their primary use is a restaurant.
Restaurant bar.
And restaurants can have ancillary uses that have, where they have, um, you know, a band that comes in or something like that.
All right, so then the only real variance that they're requesting is for the signage, for the mounted sign. Okay.
All right, uh, any other commissioners have any other questions or statements? And, uh, if not, um, I would love to entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve item Z dash 10105 at 1023 West Third Street as submitted with all staff's recommendations and conditions within the agenda staff report.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the table. Could I please get a roll call vote?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Brown? Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Samad?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Vickers?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
All right, motion's approved, item is approved. Uh, applicant, thank you for coming out and, uh, thank everybody, every, even in opposition, thank you for coming out on this action item.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a quick question? Ma'am, what is your last name again?
Scott S. C. O. T.
I would just like to apologize on our behalf for interrupting you. Um, and I would like to invite the commission, when people give testimony, whether or not we agree with what's being said or see a point to what's being said, we're here to listen until they finish. So, thank you for your comments.
All righty, so that was our last item on the regular agenda. Do we have any other new business, uh, to, to, uh, to discuss? Uh, Brad, do we need to discuss that maybe after the meeting or are we gonna, you're just gonna email? Okay, so, yeah, so he's gonna email and talk about the subcommittee and trying to find a date to, uh, to meet on the subcommittee, uh, but we will get to that, uh, next week. All right, if, uh, Monty, go ahead. Okay, great, awesome. We do have a citizens', uh, communication here at this particular time. Um, so, uh, if you will, uh, do we have the, the cards on file or we're just gonna have them to come up? Okay, all right, so, uh, in, I guess in a particular order, first, first come or first served type order, uh, if you're here and, uh, please come up to the podium and please state your name for the record and we would love to hear you.
I'd, I'd like to hear what this young lady right here has to say, the one that's been on the laptop the whole time.
Totally.
Excellent, excellent.
It's not right.
All right, uh, do we have any kind of public communication at this particular time? If not, uh, and we will also, uh, I see we have, uh, you know, some superstars here in the building in the back, so we, we appreciate always coming out here. I was, so at this particular time, if we don't have anything else, I wanna wish every everybody a, a happy, happy holiday and, uh, thank you for all our commissioners. I know everybody's always busy, we, we thank staff, uh, we, uh, we thank Sean, we thank everybody and hope everybody have a happy, happy holiday and a happy, happy new year. And Monty, we got a hand raising.
One, one other quick note, your January agenda, uh, you will elect officers for January.
That is correct. Yes, so we would do that, as a matter of fact, at the beginning of that meeting, uh, next month. And so with that being said, ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is adjourned.